One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd just like to remind everyone that in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. We'll take roll call. We're all here except for Mr. Chenus. Is there any public comment from the board?
I would like to mention that we have a grange meeting coming up this Friday evening at the library, 6:30 meet and greet, 7 o'clock discussion with the state grange about reforming our town grange.
For those of us ignorant, what is a grange?
A grange. Lunenburg had grange number 169, and I don't know why, but it was dissolved about nine years ago. And a grange is a national fraternal order of husbandry is the quote-unquote name for it. Basically, it's for a bunch of people who like animals and farming, and they get together and they help other people who like animals and farming. Did I get it right?
Anyone else? Is there any public comment from the public? All right, hearing none. We'll go into our, well, just want to say that Settlers Solar has decided to continue, so if anybody's here for that, there won't be much if any.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you continue that to a date certain?
Correct.
Oh, right, okay. Did they?
So, the original proposal was sometime next week. The board was unable to get all five members. Mr. Chenus is not here, so settlers put forward three other dates, the only of which Mr. Chenus was available was October 9th. So if the remaining four members are available October 9th, which would be one, two weeks from tomorrow, right, and it's a Tuesday, we could do it that evening. I think the next available date would then be the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be the 22nd.
I don't believe I'm in town on the 9th.
So, the 9th is a Tuesday?
Correct.
Do you need, how many numbers do you need?
Five.
No. No.
Makes it easy, I guess.
Would be the, would be what date then?
The 22nd. Would be the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Of October, okay.
Correct.
How does that work timeline-wise?
There is no timeline because we're on a remand. I don't want to speak for settlers, but I think that they are, while not excited to continue till the 22nd, willing to do so to move the process forward. Please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong.
I mean, I think that's fair. If we have to go up to the 22nd, we're prepared to, to be, set the board could accommodate us with an earlier meeting, that would be great.
And the only dates I have for council are, are that week of the 9th, and being all, getting all five members here doesn't look like it's possible on any of those dates.
And I don't, and I don't want to step on your negotiations with either council, but I, I was led to believe my clients were also available next week.
Well, that, that was discussed, and I have two members who are unavailable.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So that, that's already gone back through. So it looks like we're, we're on to the 22nd from the discussions I've had with, with Attorney Costa and his communications with Attorney Rosen.
Okay.
So we need a motion to move that to that night.
Move, I move that we continue the settlers' solar board deliberations and vote until the October 22nd meeting. Do you need a time?
You can call it 6:35. That's what we tend to call our hearings, and then we just order the agenda.
Second.
All in fa, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, thank you.
35, okay.
All right, sorry for the delay. Now we'll go into the recreational marijuana discussion and public input. Do you want to give a brief update or a brief where we left off from last time, or should we just?
Yeah, it was about 11:15, and everyone was tired, and those who are here had said their piece. So I see some familiar faces, I see a few new faces. You know, I think everyone's aware that the state in a referendum passed legalization of marijuana that included the permitting of marijuana businesses within communities in Massachusetts. The town of Lunenburg voted yes, 43, 53% to 47%. So we are allowed to prohibit marijuana businesses, any and all, through a two-step process of a town bylaw, general or zoning, and a ballot referendum on a local ballot. Without prohibiting, marijuana businesses would be allowed in any category that they most closely resemble, so a marijuana store would go into a retail location, or the town has the ability to adopt zoning bylaws that govern the location of marijuana businesses. Retail cultivation, craft cultivator, which is a combination of cultivation and processing, but it needs to be owned by a Massachusetts-based corporation, and everybody who's on the board, I believe, needs to be from Massachusetts. We're talking processing facilities, which would be facilities that extract or otherwise process items from the marijuana and sell it to other marijuana businesses, not consumers, and independent testing laboratories, which I'm sure if you followed the news at all, has been a big topic about why retail stores haven't started to open, they need to be, every product needs to be tested. The state has not issued a final license for any testing facility, thus has not issued any final license for retail facilities. And the final is marijuana transporter. This is, it's like Brink's for marijuana. It's trucks, cars, other delivery vehicles that transport marijuana from any of these marijuana businesses to one another, but not to an end consumer. Oftentimes, this license will be associated with another type of marijuana business, it's a processor or cultivator, something like that, but legally it can be permitted as its own use. The state allows that to be a use and is a license under them. If anyone followed the legalization of medical marijuana six or eight years ago, that was a, what they call a vertical license, where you were permitted for a license and it cut, you had to do all aspects of it. You had to cultivate it, you had to process it, you had to retail it, all under the same umbrella corporation, not necessarily all at the same site. Medical marijuana has taken a more à la carte approach, so you can apply for a single license, you can apply for all the licenses, but it's, each business is going to be very different in the way that they approach the community, unlike medical marijuana where it was sort of a one-size-fits-all. If a medical marijuana business is coming, they have a license to do all of these things, and they would choose how and what they're going to do in each of those places. Retail, you may just get someone who's only cultivating, you may get someone who's only processing, you may get someone who just wants to sell, and they're buying their product from other places. So all of these things need to be accounted for in zoning and regulation if and when the town chooses to do so. Does that cover it?
All right, yeah, pretty much. Thank you. Through the chair?
Sure. Could we get a brief overview of what our plan is? Because I think a lot of people are still confused about how we're going to start with a moratorium, then possibly prohibition, put the vote to the people, and afterwards, you know, if that doesn't work out, that's why we're doing this, so we have something in case.
Correct. So currently, the town has a moratorium, which was put in place in May of 2016, and that runs through the end of November of this coming year, or this year now, in two months. That prevents the location of marijuana businesses for the purposes of adequate time to plan and move forward with the town's bylaws or prohibition. Originally, the board had intended on writing regulations and putting a prohibition forward for the special town meeting in November, when it was evident that we would be unable to place a prohibition article on the statewide ballot, because it's statewide ballot and not a local ballot. The board felt it was important to extend that moratorium through the end of May 2019 for the purposes of offering a bifurcated approach to marijuana, offering both a prohibition option and a regulation option at town meeting in the spring of 19, and then offering the prohibition on the ballot in mid-May of 19. And what that would do is it would avoid there being a space between November and May where there's sort of a, an allow, if, if all was proposed in, in November, and both prohibition and the regulations passed, we would be operating under the regulations for the period between November and May. And if then prohibition passes at the ballot in May, we have marijuana businesses that are essentially grandfathered through the prohibition, but no new businesses are allowed, and it, it creates sort of a messy situation. If the, the will of the, the citizenry is for prohibition, it would be cleaner and, and I think more in, in keeping with, I think, the, the board's idea of democratic process to do them together. So the board looks to extend the moratorium without taking a position that prohibition or regulation is really the tact, offering both in a thoughtful manner for the voters at town meeting and the ballot to cast their, their votes on.
So the moratorium goes to whom? Who votes on the moratorium?
Town meeting. Special town meeting.
Special town meeting will handle that.
Yes, there'll be a warrant article for-
On November?
November 13th.
On November 13th, so if, we're, I think we're all in agreement, right, that we want the, did we take a vote on it?
Oh, yeah, for sure. I mean, the moratorium, if we don't have it, basically, they're going to consider recreational marijuana the closest use, which would be either medical-
The closest defined use in our bylaws.
Or it could be just retail, so anywhere retail's allowed, they could put a dispensary.
And I think there's an argument for it to be considered similar to medical, but I also-
I understand that, but when applicants come in, what do you think they're going to go, they're going to go for retail?
And I think this isn't something that's been adjudicated, so there's no case law, and, and I, I agree that people are going to go for the path of least resistance.
It leaves a pretty big loophole.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that update out there, so that everybody knows where we are when we start this discussion, so.
And then, in the terms of taking it two paths, I'm willing to go with whatever the residents want, or, I mean, we gotta prepare, we gotta hope for the best and prepare for the worst, depending on what they want. I mean, I'd like to hear from the people that are all for prohibition, because if that doesn't pass, we're going to be with it, so I'd like to hear from those people what their worst-case scenario is with non-prohibition. I mean, that's basically what it is for me, so.
Yeah, so that's pretty much what we're discussing from here on out, is if it should not pass, and we are-
Correct. There need, there needs to be a, there needs to be a regulatory process.
So we're going to manage it through this bylaw, which we're going to discuss now.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you'd like, I can remind people at the last meeting, there was discussions of, from the public, not reducing the 500-foot buffer. The state allows for a 500-foot buffer or reduction. We've had advice from council that you can increase that buffer, as well as increase the uses or list of, of areas where that buffer would be in place. Currently, it's any pre-existing K to 12 educational establishment. Some communities have included things like daycares, churches, you know, dance schools, places where there's, there's often children.
Do we have a way to track that? Like a map of the town?
No, we don't. I mean, it would, and if it's a special permit, it would be sort of an investigation.
When we allow uses, like on the use table, it's per zone.
Correct.
So if we allow it in one part of a zone, it has to be allowed, and we can't just say, we would allow it in this piece of commercial.
Well, you could also create an overlay district.
You can, we can create an overlay district.
Through an overlay?
I think we should discuss, because I didn't find, I looked at five or six different towns, and I didn't find anybody actually increased it more than the 500 feet. I don't know, maybe that's just, I didn't look at the right towns, but-
No, I, I don't think that there's a lot of people out there increasing it.
Yeah, not that I'm not against it, I'm just saying, I didn't find a lot, anybody who did, who was going to do that. But I did find it interesting that some, someone was increasing the, and I think this is important in clarifying, perhaps, when you're giving out a special permit, you know, when you're deliberating over a special permit, what exactly is a, you know, what's a child use area, what isn't, you know?
Yeah, and-
If you, if you increase the message, what do you call it, noticing circumference, or rather, the distance, rather-
You're talking about the butters?
Yes, the butters list, from 300 to 500. So that way you get, I thought it was an interesting-
Oh, in the bylaw?
Yeah, in the bylaw.
You can certainly do that.
That way, yeah, so you get more input.
Yep.
From a greater, you know, number of citizens, about what's, what's a park and what isn't.
Correct. There was a discussion about including how that 500 feet is measured, is it from property line to property line, is it building to building, is it building to property line?
Well, I'll give you, for instance, Cherry Hill, in the wintertime, everybody sleds there.
Yep.
It's not a park.
Correct.
It's just a hill.
Correct. Separate special permit for each establishment type, so if someone was getting three licenses, they'd get three special permits. I, I think that's reasonable. There was talk about security ONM, emergency response plans. I think that's, you know, something that the board has shown that they're interested in. No smoking, eating, consuming on premises, this is currently against state law, the state hasn't developed regulations for that, so that wouldn't be too big a deal, but in the long term, that's certainly going to change. They're already talking about in the next month, starting to discuss public consumption licenses and what that might look like. Management of facility by the licensee as a condition or as a part of the bylaw, so it's a bylaw compliance issue.
Can we, can we prohibit onsite consum, just because, I mean, we've heard from Chief Marino-
Sure, you can right now.
About, yeah, okay, because of the testing, I, I don't think there's sufficient testing techniques out there to say, you know, this person's had too much, or-
And, you know, I think onsite consumption really means within the business itself, I mean, if, much like a liquor store, I mean, if you, if you sell someone a pint-
Yeah.
They're, and they crack it open in your store, you can be like, what are you doing? Get out.
Right.
If they go and sit in their car in the parking lot and chug it down, you're not really, you know, you've done the best that you can at that point.
Yep.
So I think it's, it's within the, the bounds of the business.
Okay.
You know, and I think that obviously if someone's, if there's a business where there's a consistent outdoor problem with consumption, that becomes a policing issue.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, obviously, that, that could really go back to this, but not located in a business, not locating businesses in a building with residential, not, considering it not a home occupation, not having retail located in a mobile facility. We talked about, like, no ice cream truck selling hot and pertinent.
Yeah, I saw that in a few places.
No drive-up or walk-up.
Yeah.
I think that's probably less of it, well, drive-up might be an issue here, but, so it, it sounds like, you know, that's kind of the, the stuff we got at 10:30 last meeting, so I, I don't know if there's new, new stuff, if people have other objections or support or have other thoughts on how it might, might be regulated.
I saw a lot about the owner being responsible for security-
Mm-hmm.
-on-site, including cameras, you know?
Correct.
So that, making the police job easier.
And I believe a lot of that is in the regs-
Okay.
-from the state.
I think I saw it in Cambridge as well, I think it was Cambridge that had a significant amount of that.
With the, I know with the medical, they're required to have two separate independent security systems, they are required to have cameras, and I believe a lot of that information in detail transferred over to the, the way the Cannabis Control Commission wrote their medical, or their, the recreational or adult use regs.
Okay.
Anyone opposed to opening it up to the public?
No.
All right.
What do you have?
No, I know.
I thought it was kind of workshopping type.
Anybody from the public would like to stand up and speak? I'd like to hear from them. We are, I mean, you can take it to any level, but we're here to discuss retail, so.
Hi, Jim Lebec, 33 Lancaster Avenue. I am not a connoisseur of cannabis, so, and forgive me, I have not been following the, the arguments either way since voting for question four. So you, you mentioned that the moratorium was placed in May of 2016, expiring in November of 2018. Can I ask what the board has been doing in the spirit of, of conversation and discussion during that time, towards that end, to get it?
Sure, yep. So this was passed in, I'm sorry, it was May of 17.
Must've been 17.
It was 17, I apologize. So in, this was passed in the fall of 16, with the Cannabis Control Commission intended to be seated, you know, in like three months after, after the new year, after the new governor, state of the state sort of stuff. As with all good things, that didn't happen. It was probably September of last year when the, they finally did all of their bill amendments and, and put together the organization of the Cannabis Advisory Commission and the Cannabis Control Commission. It was probably December when all of the commissioners were seated. So they came out and said, listen, we're going to work really hard, and we're going to issue our regulations by April 15th of 2018. So in order to write a bylaw for May of 2018 with regulations coming out two weeks prior to town meeting, it's virtually impossible, which was why we, we felt it was important to extend into November. You know, now that I'm thinking about it-
It was an 18-month moratorium.
It was? It was, so it was, it was, it was annual town meeting?
It was annual all the way to November, it was a year and a half.
Yeah, okay, but we felt that, you know, knowing ahead of time that the regulations wouldn't be ready, we wouldn't be able to be ready for May. And we did it originally knowing that we wanted time to be able to work on it. So when the regulations came out, the board started discussing it. We spent some of the summer discussing it, sort of prepping to really dig into it, to find out we wouldn't be able to do the prohibition piece within the statewide ballot. And not being able to offer both paths is really what put the brakes on moving forward towards putting something on special town meeting.
Okay.
Again, the board's taken a position that they're not endorsing one path or the other, and so to only offer one, or to offer both and have one not be able to be in full force and effect for another six months, if they both should pass at town meeting, I think the board felt was not something that they wanted to undertake.
Okay.
Do you have this? This was presented to us.
I don't have that.
Would you like to see that?
Is it online?
It is, I, was it online?
I believe that is.
Is it online? Okay.
If it's not, I can, I can make sure it gets up there.
Basically, we wanted to take a cautious approach and react to what the residents wanted, not just throw out a, a bylaw that could be open for interpretation and contradicted by the state regulations, because we were weak.
There's a lot of back and forth with town council on it, too, it's just-
I imagine there is.
It's a deep issue.
I mean, I was involved in writing the APDC regulations, and that took a long time-
Yeah.
-even without getting town council involved, so I can imagine how long that, that took. That said, I do believe, or at least I would like to believe, that the 53% that did vote to allow for this in our community, of the, however many percent actually voted, did know what they were talking about, and did know what they were asking for. I would like to believe that. I don't know if that's true, but I'd, I'd like to think that our electorate was informed. It would be nice. So from that point, I am not for prohibition. I am for sensible regulation. It, it seems prohibition is against what the majority of the voters, of that small percentage that bothered to vote, voted for, in, in my mind. So I would like to see some of the sensible regulations that were suggested the last meeting. There were several very solid regulations in there that seemed to fit very well for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may.
Actually, do you want Matthew to respond, Mr. F, as a response? No, you can stand up there, I just didn't know if you wanted to.
No, I just wanted to emphasize, I believe the ballot question was decriminalization?
Right.
No, it was legalization.
Legalization, right. So I, I believe, in my understanding, my understanding at the time that I voted yes was decriminalization.
Right.
I did not expect that it was going to open the door to these five different types of businesses. I had no idea.
Yeah, that was all missing from everything I ever saw on it, and I was just thinking, yeah, good, don't, why send people to jail for it, you know, I mean, it doesn't make any sense, but I certainly didn't see all this stuff coming down the, down the pike.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie Adams, Williams Drive, and I just wanted to speak about the 53%, and I've done this before, but I'll do it again, just to counter the idea of question four, and that people may have voted yes to legalize it, to use it, to decriminalize it, but they may have not have voted yes to sell it, promote it, advertise it, grow it. And so to say that the intent of the voter is in the outcome of that is unfair to the process. We've talked about this before, but I just wanted to put it out there since it, it's part of the conversation tonight. And also, I mean, I think really it's just now it's a new process. That passed, and also 53%, and we've talked about this before, it's a very small margin that it won by, which I totally support, narrow victories, but I just think we've got to let go of the winning of question four and sort of start a whole new process with what's best for Lunenburg in terms of these things, so, thank you.
Well, again, that would be up to the town to put forth a prohibition. As of now, we, if no prohibition is put forward, we have to have regulation, because it's, it's here, so. Anyone else? Please?
Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I do not support, well, first of all, we back up a little bit, and it was my understanding that you've broken this up into four or five different segments in days, so what we're here for this evening is to discuss the specific retail application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So I will hold off my other remarks that I have for another day. With regard to retail distribution of marijuana and the various products associated thereto, I am against, okay? I feel that there are ample opportunities that will present themselves so that people will not be prohibited from doing whatever they choose to do, but I choose not to have it within the town of, of Lunenburg, okay? The second, and I would hope that you, you are going to put an article on the warrant to essentially prohibit that, correct?
No, we're not going to endorse either one, we're going to let, if the residents want to put together a citizens petition on the board's election, I mean, for me, I'm-
No, no, you're talking in May.
Yes.
Yes. And the, the board has committed to put both prohibition and-
Oh, right, right, right.
-in May, so there'll be, there'll be opportunities to vote for both prohibition and regulation at the May town meeting.
For a bylaw, but to-
Correct.
-actually vote in prohibition, that has to go to a ballot vote.
Yes, and I-
Okay.
In May.
Yes, if you're going to put together the prohibition warrant article, I would expect you would ask the-
No, I thought he was asking if we were putting together a prohibition-
For a special town meeting?
You can't, it has to be a ballot vote, right?
Well, it has to be both. So you could put one on special town meeting, and it could pass, but it won't become effective until the ballot vote also happens.
Correct.
You have to have both pass.
Okay. Let's, let's stop for a moment and, and make sure that I understand this, because I've lost a bit of my fastball. I thought I heard this evening that there was a time gap here, and something had to happen at the special town meeting.
Correct, that will be a moratorium.
Oh, who's going to put that up?
The planning board is.
Okay, so that's what I was asking for.
That means nothing can happen until-
That's what I was asking for, to make sure that there was something that would be coming up at the special town meeting.
That is correct, yes.
And you will take care of that?
Yes.
Actually, you will by voting it in. I mean, that's the important, but we'll put it forward, but-
Sure, but it's got to get on the, on the, the warrant.
Right, we're going to make sure it gets on the warrant.
The language is already in front of the town manager.
Okay. Has it been approved and reviewed by town council?
Well, since it just went over there today, no, but it has, it is in, town council has seen it, the warrant doesn't close for another week.
Okay, my, okay, my point is, I would hope that town council would have participated in some manner, shape, or form in the construction of, of that, so that it's, it's ready to rock and roll.
Well, we currently have a moratorium on the books.
Yeah.
So the amendment just changes the date within the moratorium that it ends.
I, simply stated, I don't want this to, to circumvent because of a technicality, okay? That's, that's how I feel, okay? That's, that's how I feel, okay? The, the second part of this is that there are, as I stated before, that there are so many things that have to be covered here, and it can be so protracted, and, and so time-consuming, and so expensive. I think the easiest thing to do, and the right thing to do, by the way, insofar as I'm concerned, is to deny the opportunity forever and ever, okay? So, whatever you have to do to do that, I think is what should be done. At least give the people in Lunenburg the opportunity to vote on that type of a thing. I think there are some security issues that are, that are really big. There are some timing issues, and I would suggest that if by chance this, you're drawing up something, that the, the time for the operation of these entities be from two o'clock in the morning to three fifteen. I would suggest that they not, the businesses not be open on any day that ends with a Y, and make it very, very stringent, okay? I'm being facetious, but you get the point. And I'm surprised that I didn't get even a smile from anybody, but that's okay.
I'm smiling!
Okay. The point is, we have an opportunity here, folks, okay? And if you wanna take your kids, or your grandkids, or your cousins' kids, or whatever, and drive up and have people say, "Uncle Dave, what's, what's that right there? Oh, that's the place that, that we sell marijuana." And then hear all of this stuff in school about, you know, "It's not good for you," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I, I just, I'm against it, pure and simple. So, thank you for the opportunity, and as long as we are covering our bases to make sure that there is a opportunity at the special town meeting to do what we have to do, and then again in May, I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think now would be a good time to emphasize that we, the necessity, the necessity to have a bylaw in order, in, in, in play, ready to enact, if the moratorium doesn't pass the town meeting and the ballot initiative? Because we were a yes town, if, if it doesn't, the moratorium doesn't pass, then we have to regulate it?
If the moratorium doesn't pass, then we've got nothing.
Hmm.
If the prohibition, if the moratorium passes, and then the prohibition doesn't pass, yes, we do need the regulations.
So, we actually do have to write just in preparation for the possibility that the prohibition does not pass?
Correct, yeah. That's what we're doing. And I think to Mr. Rogers' point, and, and he didn't specifically say this, but I think what his hope is, is that the board looks at being specific and...
Very restrictive.
Restrictive, on, on how they write those regulations. And I think the one, I'm sorry, just, the one thing that I, I probably left out in the introduction is, we also have the ability to limit the number of establishments in the community. It's, if it's greater than twenty percent of our off-premise alcohol licenses, we can do it by right, because that's, everybody's allowed to do that. If it's less than twenty percent of our off-premise alcohol licenses, we would need a ballot vote as well to do that. The town of Lunenburg has eight off-premise alcohol licenses, so if we were...
Sorry, just for retail?
Correct. That, that's, that's what off-premise is. On-premise would be pouring license. So, if we were to limit it to two retail establishments, that would have us close to thirty percent. So, we'd be above the threshold, and we would be able to do that through bylaw, through a general bylaw to limit that number. And it doesn't completely eliminate it, and it doesn't do anything to limit cultivation, processing, testing, but it does offer the opportunity to, both offer, the opportunity for retail through regulation, but also ensure that it doesn't become, you know, the biggest retail game in town.
We can prohibit each of those uses individually, too.
Correct. But that also needs both the bylaw and the ballot. So, it's not as if you can just decide one and do it through bylaw. Anything you wanna prohibit requires ballot and bylaw.
Okay.
Anything we wanna prohibit requires ballot.
Because...
State...
No, local ballot initiative.
Local ballot.
And town meeting bylaw approval.
Kim Cole, five sixty-three Mass Ave. I just have a question, speaking to what Adam just said about limiting the amount of retail establishments. What happens if you were to put on the ballot only one, because it's less, and then that does not pass? Does that automatically go to two? Because, no. So, what does that mean?
Automatically goes to as many as...
As many as possible.
As possible.
Okay.
Now, if you had, if you did a bylaw that was one and a bylaw that was two, and you put the one on the back, I mean, you, you, really, you could, you could try to legislate everything, and you could have a hundred article warrant.
Right. But, but, so, but my question is, so if you do one, then, and it doesn't pass, then that...
You're, you're just, it's...
But could you put two in the bylaw? Could you put a one, and then if it doesn't pass, you put two in the bylaw?
You could, I guess, I guess theoretically amend the bylaw, but our issue is, town meeting is before the ballot, so, and the wording...
So, you would have, you would have open season until November?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know...
I don't think we should do that. I think we should just say two.
The reality is, the reality is, you know, there's only gonna be so much retail space available in town. There's only gonna be so much retail space that qualifies unless the board says, "Just put 'em anywhere," which isn't what I've heard the board say over the past six months. So, and the capital to start one of these businesses, it's not like, it's not a, it's not a low-capital kind of business.
Has the board considered, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, they're already putting one right in air on two A, right before the Rotary.
But that's also someone who already has a medical establishment.
That's what I'm trying, yeah, they have one over behind the, by the Nishoba Club, so it's, they're established, they're just expanding their business into recreation. But I mean, other towns, I think Fitchburg has a couple of grow facilities, Lemonster, I mean, so we did take the cautious approach. We could've just written a bylaw, and they could be here now, so...
Oh, no. I understand, and I think that the moratorium is appreciated by everyone who specifically is for prohibition. You know, we need time to figure it out, because even if it, if it does go through, then we, well, it went through. If the prohibition doesn't go through, then we definitely need something in place. I agree. I wanna be productive. Has the board considered anything having to do with a person getting a license and then having a specific amount of time to start something up? I also saw some of that in a bylaw, where something has to be moving within a certain amount of time after they get the license, so people just don't get licenses and...
Did they say how long it was?
Uh, I think it was twelve months.
Okay. Because special permits by state law, excuse me, have three years to act on. So, I don't know if perhaps the Cannabis Control Commission has a time limit, but that's something that I think...
I've seen it limited to two years, but special permits on marijuana establishments. I've read them in a couple of bylaws. They were limited to two years, so...
Okay. I can see which one I saw, but something limited, I mean, I don't know, I don't really know what the effect is if someone were to get a license and just hold it.
Right, because they can only open two establishments, but how many licenses are they allowed to grant? They could grant five licenses, and people could just sit on them.
No, because, well, what happens is, the licensing procedure is the, and I've probably said this more than people care to hear, but it's the inverse of alcohol licensing. So, alcohol licensing, you come to the municipality, and you go to the board of selectmen and say, "I want an alcohol license, do you have any?" And they say, "Yeah, we've got an all-alcohol pouring license." Great. Fill out your application, you pay them your money, they hold the hearing. They do their core check, everything passes, they say, "Great, here you go, we like you, you can have your alcohol license." Then it goes to the ABCC. They run it, it's not a rubber stamp, but it's, it's a, it's a more cursory check. With this, you have to, and this is probably good information that we haven't really put out there, we did it a little bit in the, the information session, in order to open a marijuana establishment, there's a prescribed procedure. You have to come to the community and hold the community meeting. The town has zero to do with this, other than in many instances, the community will provide space. So, someone may come and say, "I wanna open a cultivation facility, I need to do a community meeting." And we may say, "You can use the Ballotta Meeting Room, because that's where we hold our meetings, people know it, there's some space there." We may say, "You can have a collaborative room at the high school," whatever. Well, the, they hold this community information meeting. They name what type of business they wanna operate, what licenses they're seeking, where they wanna do it, and all this needs to be done no longer than six months prior to their application. So, if they were to come in October and do it, they would only have until March to file their application. Then they have to go to the board of selectmen, negotiate a host community agreement. Then, once they've signed that host community agreement, they put together their application to the Cannabis Control Commission. All the information that they require, they do the background checks, all of that. So, once they have a final application, a complete application, the Cannabis Control Commission sends notice to the community and says, "We have this complete application in your community, can you permit this?" Not, "Do they have a permit?", not, "Have they been permitted?", but, "Can you permit this?" And the town says yes or no. So, if we've issued two special permits, excuse me, that are still outstanding, and we have a limit of two special permits, we would say, "No, we can't permit this." And that would die on the vine right there. If we haven't issued the two special permits, we would say, "Yes, we can permit this." And then they would go and, and go through that. An example of this, and they, they'd go through the Cannabis Control Commission, they'd get their provisional license, they'd come to the locality, they'd get all of their special permitting requirements done, all of that, they'd do their build-out, they'd go back and get final inspection, and then move on their way. Worcester, for example, I think, has a fifteen license limit in the city, and I think that they have twenty-six applicants for fifteen licenses. So, people have gone to the Cannabis Control Commission, and they've submitted applicant, completed applications to them, and now...
And now each is going in for...
Now, they're trying to go and fight for those fifteen slots in the city. So, it's not, this isn't something that, that's, you know, conceptual, this is the reality.
Right, so they only grant the license if you have the room for it, so no one can actually hold licenses for an extended period? Okay.
They grant you a provisional license, and if you maybe don't get your special permit, your provisional license goes away, and you never get your, your full license.
Okay. So, that makes, that makes more sense. Is there anything that the board has reviewed in bylaws that they're uncertain about which way that we should go with things?
As far as prohibition or allowing certain...
No, no, just, just, I mean, we have to write them.
Prohibition's gonna be pretty easy. Nothing's allowed anywhere.
But I mean, they, we have to write them. So, like, is there anything that anyone on the board is hemming and hawing about, about, "Well, should we do this, or should we do that, or should we do this, or..."
I can only speak for myself. I find myself in the odd position of understanding both sides of the issue, and I find myself in the middle, you know? I find myself wondering what the best move is for the town. I'm a dad, I've got children, what message do I wanna send to them? I've seen a lot of my friends waste their lives with drugs, you know?
Right, and I mean, I think, I'm against prohibition, I, I, I'm for prohibition of it, but the reality is, is I also wanna have a safeguard, because when it happens, but as I'm reviewing these different town, city bylaws, you know, I, I think a lot of it is pretty straightforward. I don't know too much about zoning, so I'm not, I can't really make any recommendations as to what zones it should be allowed in, obviously, I mean, there was buffers with schools and things like that, but I, I think that you guys would know that better.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's... I guess what I would say is, you don't need to know about zoning. I would say, think about areas in town where it would be reasonable. If, if...
I can't think of any.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I mean. If there's gonna be two, we gotta pick two spots where we think it's appropriate.
We have to pick two spots.
You have to pick a zone, or an overlay, right?
I mean, we can do an overlay.
Where is the impact gonna be the, the least harmful to the, to the community?
Right.
We have very little industrial land, we have, you know, a tiny little piece of commercial property, and, you know, when I look at the regulations that I've seen, they all prohibit it in residential.
Right.
So, it's out of residential in my mind, but I'm only one member. I mean, someone else might have a different, you know, attitude toward that.
Home businesses. So, I was just looking for feedback, 'cause like, you know, if we're gonna have a discussion as to what, what is what, I mean, when I'm reading things, I can make recommendations like I did at the last meeting, as to, I think we should, you know, not...
Which I thought were very helpful, those were very helpful.
But the, you know, the reality, I mean, cultivation is next, so I'll be back for that, but figuring out what, what goes where, you know, if there are anything that anyone can think of or has any idea on, and, or is unsure of, I think posing that as feedback to us at meetings like this, like if you look at cultivation, which is the next one, and say, you know, "I read these two different bylaws on cultivation, and this one says this, and this one says this, you know, does anybody have any opinions?", I think might direct the conversation a little bit more as to people's opinions, as to what the law should be, other than just, you know, "We don't want it, but we have to have something." And I know it's a lot of work, potentially for nothing, hopefully, but it, it's appreciated that you're taking the time to go through it and get the feedback from the town.
I think that's why establishing overlays is gonna be important, because, I mean, I've heard, you know, people say Summer Street, you know, the, down by like the border of Fitchburg, where the smoke shop is, you know?
Yep.
Haven't anybody say, "In the middle of my neighborhood," but...
Right.
I've heard people say, "The Marine, Fitchburg Marine, right in front of the police station." I mean, well, you can't really find a safer spot than that, you know, I mean, so, and there's two schools of thought as for that. I mean, do you want it out of the way, where you, the town of Lunenburg, I think if children are getting in there and having access to it, they're gonna be out of business pretty quick, because word spreads fast, that kinda thing, and they can hop on a bus right now at the teen center and go to Fitchburg if they wanted to, you know, so it's, there's just different schools of thought, so...
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So, to follow up on that, my, my major concern was, was where do people, given that it may not pass for the moratorium, for the prohibition, where, where, basically? And the retail is probably the most important one to locate. I mean, the rest of them are all gonna be enclosed and pretty much innocuous, not gonna stand out.
Are we all in favor of promoting retail? I'm not. I would like to see a prohibition on retail. I don't have a problem with research facilities, even a growing facility if it's positioned properly, I just have a problem with the retail personally.
No, again, we're not promoting one, one way or another, we're just, we're trying to get the input for...
Well, you can, we can prohibit, we can prohibit them as a use.
Retail shops.
Retail shops.
But it's dependent upon a vote.
Well, yes, but I think what David's saying is, is, is the board looking at a package prohibition or an individual-use prohibition?
Right.
Where you would name each of the five uses and prohibit them individually, so that perhaps, and again, I, I think there are some folks who don't wanna see any of it in town, just get it out, just don't, don't even, don't even have it here. Some people who would, might say, "You know what, retail's really the worst of the worst, we really have to not have that. These testing labs are labs, they're, you know, they're locked in a, in a box. Processing is gonna look like an industrial building, yeah, maybe it's marijuana, but it's not really exposure to kids, they're not advertising, and maybe cultivation is the same thing, so people may be willing to entertain those options." And, and maybe people won't, maybe it's, it's a blanket prohibition. And I think the board needs to decide whether they wanna do prohibit all marijuana businesses or prohibit this.
But why? Why couldn't you do, why can't you do both? Can't you do, I mean, yeah, if the prohibition fails, why can't you just say, from my understanding, is you can still say, "We don't want retail in town, but we don't mind having this, that, and the other thing."
But you still need to do the ballot.
Yeah.
So, but you're asking then six questions on the ballot, and what if, what if the total prohibition passes?
If we get the total prohibition out of the way, right, then you, then you're dealing with, if it doesn't pass, then you have to deal with the other issues, the, the...
But are you suggesting them all on the same ballot?
No.
Saying, doing five questions, one for each, that way we can gauge whether if people don't want, majority of people don't want retail, they'll vote against it. Majority of people want agricultural, or cultivation, they would vote for it, I mean, majority of people want agriculture, or cultivation, they would vote for it, I mean, that's-
Correct, and I, and I don't know, I don't know that there was ever a, a decision on doing one or five.
Because that's the choice people are gonna have, if they want cultivation and not retail, but they only have prohibition or non-prohibition, they gotta pick one of those.
I thought that you could have, no, what, what I'm saying to you, though, is, I thought that what we, the way that Adam explained it, at least, maybe I'm wrong, is that, you could either have the all-out prohibition, right, or you could take, you could have a bylaw that, that says, "We are ba, essentially, cutting retail out of the community", cannot have retail, but, you can have a growing facility in this zone, you can have a in this zone, you can have in this zone, okay, without having to go to a ballot question.
No. Once you prohibit, you have to go to the ballot question.
Any use?
Any, any marijuana business that you wish to prohibit requires a ballot question.
Okay.
So, he said you can do the total prohibition, or you can do individual prohibitions, with the understanding that, should one pass, that specific use is prohibited, and all the others, you'd have to have a backup plan for where they would be permitted.
Okay.
So, if we were to do it that way, what I would probably suggest is that, we just do a little use table blurb, that has, you know, the use table section with no across the board for each marijuana business, a definition of that business, and that would be its own individual question, so there'd be five, five warrant articles, and then there'd be five ballot initiatives. So, any one of those can fail at either test, and it would have to pass both in order to, to have that business be prohibited, which is fine, we can do that. I misunderstood, I thought you were suggesting that we do six, and have one be a total prohibition on the ballot, and then have the other five following it.
Well, not if you're saying you can't do that, I, obviously-
Well, I, I get, there's no reason you can't, it would just be kind of sloppy if the total prohibition passes, and the retail prohibition passes, and then the other four prohibitions don't pass, I mean, obviously, the, the total prohibition-
It would be redundant, yep, okay.
It covers everything, but, you've kind of created this mixed message of-
No, it would have to be simple.
But, you could put the total prohibition first, and then pass over the remaining five questions.
No, you can't.
Oh, because-
Because the town meeting is prior to the ballot. So, if the ballot had been first, you could-
Do it at the town meeting, but you can't do it at the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could theoretically, and, and that's why I asked when you wanted to do it, because you could do, like, the total prohibition, and if it just bombs, you could come back theoretically the next year and say, "Look, we really want to ban retail now." But, I mean, at that point, if you limited it to two, you might have already permitted those two in town, I mean, just depending.
Right, 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 makes sense.
Again, I, I still don't believe we're going to be a bastion of marijuana retail, just by product of the traffic that comes to town.
I just don't like the all or nothing. Skeet they've thrown in our faces, you know what I mean, really pisses me off.
Well, and it doesn't have to be all or nothing.
Well, it kind of does.
And, and again, I mean, that's, that's something the Board needs to decide, do you want to force the residents to decide on everything or nothing, or do you want them to be allowed to individually decide on each of the, the business establishment types?
Hmm.
I mean, the impact of retail, the impact of independent testing laboratory are drastically different. The public face of, the exposure to, obviously, you know, cultivation probably falls somewhere in the middle. I mean, independent testing laboratory is pretty self-contained, it's, it's a bunch of scientists and, and support staff-
You can tuck it off into the-
And, so, I mean, and I'm not necessarily advocating that we should search that out, I don't know that the state's gonna have too many more, I mean, the, the ones that the Cannabis Control Commission is permitting are existing laboratories under the medical program, that are just expanding and, and need to be licensed under this adult use program, so, but, that doesn't mean that there won't be an expansion at some time, and, you know, what would be the impact?
Yeah. Well, again, it's not our job to go, you know, fill these positions, it's just to create space for them, so.
Yeah.
So, I, I was under the impression that we did want to have the five articles and, and the five ballot questions.
Separate and individual?
That was my understanding when we spoke about it before, and I think that, if, given a reasonable explanation of the position that we're in, because of the state's regulation, at the beginning of the town meeting articles presentation, that we can, we can get everybody to understand that they should pass all six articles, or all 10, however it is, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a prohibition of one through five, and then a bylaw for one through five, that it reasonably should be understood that we kind of need to take both of them, and approve them at town meeting, and then wait till the ballot initiative for the decision to be made. And then, the next year, we can work on revising the bylaw if no, if, if that is necessary. But, we need to have it in case it doesn't work out in the way it's expected, my understanding of it.
I mean, we can always revise the bylaw, I don't think we want to go in saying, "Well, you just have to pass this, and we'll fix it later if it's broken." I think we need to go in with the best bylaw we, we have, and say, "This is, this is reasonably what we've come up with, and we think that this attacks these problems for these reasons", and, you know, as we move forward, we always have the opportunity to amend the bylaw as necessary. You know, and, and I think that, you know, it was said tonight, we need to ban this forever and ever, and, that's, you can never ban anything forever and ever, because a future town meeting can always take action to, to change, alter, or, or otherwise. So, that's something that, you know, not necessarily, and, the, the prohibition can always come back, and can always be proposed again. And, and again, it's still the same two-tier approach, but, it, it certainly, i- if, if it doesn't pass the first time around, and, and if the regulations go into effect, and, and people are either, you know, salty about not getting the prohibition, or don't feel the regulations are, are either doing their job, or, they feel there's an impact that was unforeseen, there's always the opportunity to, to repetition on either side of it.
Right. So, I think, I think separating it into the five questions, the five separate sections, which we're separating it into anyway, okay, we're taking each one in turn, seems to make sense to me, because it also gives, it, it sort of speaks to both sides of the question, because, if, you know, if anyone was mistaken, and when they, you know, voted in favor of it, and said, "Well, I didn't think they were, wasn't talking about growing, or I wasn't talking about retail", it gives them an opportunity to speak on that part of it, or to speak to accepting any other part. So, it makes, it makes sense to me, to at least to separate them in that fashion, and present them as a, as a group.
That's how I feel, I mean, personally, I'm not in favor of total prohibition or anything, because, I mean, that's just, you never know what, they could come up with something reasonable, I think doing it the five separate ways, like you said, gives, people are for all-out prohibition, gotta check the no box five times, but, the people that want to piecemeal it, have the ability to do that as well, so.
Could I ask you to ask if there's any?
We can ask, if anybody has anything to say, please raise your hand, I'm happy to-
Any feedback on that, that option?
I, I don't believe I'm hearing some of this stuff, but I am. I gotta tell you, that, that I really, really think that we have to think long and hard about this, and I, I don't understand how we, you know, good people can, can say that, that this is a, a good thing for our town. You have two beautiful daughters over there. Are you telling me that you'd like them to come home, smoking a jay with Billy Joe and Harry J?
No.
I don't, of course you wouldn't.
No, of course not.
So, why are we even discussing this? And, for the record, if, if it's been okay that you can do this, you can buy this, it doesn't say that it has to be in Lunenburg, and to suggest that maybe we should have a little symposium at the school is crazy! And, you know, and I know it was just a, a quick thing, but, we, we shouldn't be, you shouldn't be on the site selection commission for, for finding out where you could put this stuff. I, I, I don't think, that's going into the process. I mean, it's really simple, no. You want your stuff? Absolutely, go to it, go to it, and there's plenty of places that you can do it.
But, that has to go to the ballot, Dave, that has to go to you, the people at this town, they have to decide that, that doesn't be the side of the ballot.
Well, you know what, I'm looking for some leadership here, okay, I'll be very frank with you, okay, I'm looking for some leadership, saying, "You know what, this is what we have to do, but we don't have to like this, and we don't, aren't supporting this thing", and raise your hand and say, "No, absolutely no!", and we'll do whatever.
I'll be honest, I don't feel that way.
Okay, good, well, you know, you know, I love you like a brother, and I think that you've done a lot of great things. You want your, your kids, your boys, smoking this shit?
No, and that's my job as a parent, to teach them that that's wrong.
So, why are you gonna allow it? You're gonna have this stuff grown?
I'm not allowing anything, the people of Massachusetts, the people of this town voted to have it put where it is, I'm reacting to the situation, I'm playing the hand I'm dealt, I'm not the one that's deciding whether it's restricted or prohibited in Lunenburg, you are. So, if you want to get a citizen's petition and put a prohibition ballot question on there, do it, please do it, and then the people will vote on it. It's not like I'm saying, I have no power over whether it's prohibited or not.
I'm not afraid of doing that, but, what I'm saying is, I want some leadership up here, okay? This is a very important thing, and the next step is, you have to say, "An overlay district for growing the stuff, an overlay district for, for the, the, what's the-"
Well, if we don't have overlays, then we say, "If it's allowed in commercial, then it's allowed in all commercial, anywhere that's commercial." So, if we put an overlay, we can say it's allowed in this section particularly.
But, you're site selection, then, you're saying that, you know, I, I just, you know-
I'm with you, Dave, I am with you, Mr. Rogers, I am totally with you, but, it's, the state has put this board in the position that it's in, where we have got to, we've got to cover all our bases, or it's just gonna be like solar, blanket exception, yep, go ahead, put it wherever you want.
Yeah.
So, we have to do the, the groundwork here that we're doing, to sort of, limit everything on the outside, but then it comes down to everyone in town showing up for those meetings, and showing up for that vote, and saying, "You know what, yes, we are, yes, we all said yes, but, we didn't mean it, what we meant was, we don't want-"
So, the flip side of this thing, being very facetious about this, okay, is, you could say, "You know what, you could do this any place in Lunenburg, you want it in retail, put it in retail!"
That's what's coming.
What do you mean, that they can do that next to my house? Absol- oh, I don't want that!
That's what's coming if the moratorium doesn't pass.
Okay.
As you can see, I feel passionate about this.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the methodical approach that you're taking, and step by step. I would love to see more than four people here from the community giving input. That's where it's starting, and that's where the problem is, is that we don't have the community input that we need, and that's what you're stuck with. So, you have to make a decision based on the input of four people. It was three people last time.
Yeah.
I'm the sole voice for, not against prohibition of everything, but sensible regulation. My kids are approached at school by classmates to sell them marijuana. I don't know what's in that marijuana that they're, they're selling at school, and if it's in a retail facility, it's at least it's getting tested. So, I certainly don't promote drug use to my children, but we certainly promote alcohol use all over town, every restaurant you go into, there is a difference, yes, but it, there's still gateways. And, as a parent, it's absolutely my job to teach them what I believe is right and wrong, and to make sure that, that what is available to them is safety. So, I appreciate the methodical approach that you're taking, I do agree that you, you'd need the five things, because it may not be a size, one-size-fits-all for the community. One thing I would be interested in hearing is, if anybody has done any kind of studies on what kind of tax revenue we could expect in either one of those five.
Limited at best, it's only retail.
You, you get, you get, they, they have to have a host community agreement, and you can charge up to, is it, what is it, 3%, right?
3% of gross.
3% of gross for five years, and after that, it, basically, there's no more requirement to pay anything. So, you can renegotiate, if they're willing to renegotiate, but, it's basically on them, so you know that goes away, it just goes away.
Well, and, and I think that there's a couple of things, there is a local option tax for retail, which is 3% on top of the 10.75 state excise, or the state additional retail. But, as far as tax revenue goes, I think you're probably talking more real estate tax and personal property, which is where the town gets the majority of their receipts. You know, I don't know that there's ever been a, a real study of that, I did a tour of a cultivation facility in Fitchburg with the building inspector about a year ago, and, they had about $15 million worth of equipment in this building that they were rehabbing, which all becomes personal property, so, you know, and, and the value of the building that they have on the land is, is probably substantial, equivalent to an industrial, if not larger, in value based on, you know, what they have to do to improve the building, to be able to keep it secure, and all that kind of stuff. So, there is a real estate value added to, to the town as far as, you know, new growth and, and the, the tax rolls. But, again, you know, we're talking about a singular facility, and, and any single facility, and I, I would expect on retail, that's gonna be even, that's gonna be much lower, because, essentially, they're keeping stuff in a case, I mean, it's, you know, like a cellphone store, you know, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot to a retail store where they're just selling you stuff over the counter, and, and any one facility probably isn't gonna solve or put a dent in tax increases, or, you know, move the budget in an appreciable way. It'd be a, probably, a one-time wonderful new growth number, that just gets absorbed over time, so I don't know, I don't know there'd be a huge tax boon.
Yeah, I just, I just remember when, when Colorado legalized recreational use in that state, their, their state tax revenues went to-
Correct.
Went, went sky-high, and, and were able to, to cover many of the capital needs.
And I think that that's, yeah, that's probably a-
But, the ability to negotiate goes state to state, because like, with the 3%, the state's kind of tying the town's hands on what they can negotiate.
But, that doesn't, that doesn't translate down to the local level.
Correct, and, and that was, that was a state budget-
We're limited to what we can do.
And I believe in Colorado, they had an almost 30% tax on, on sale, I think it was between 25 and, and 30, somewhere in there, and we're at, you know, 10, 10.75. So, that, you know, I, I think that there's a, you know, a significant difference in that, and, you know, the state government every year is, is talking about how they're tight, and their tax revenues are tight, and, you know, "Ooh, we gotta watch out", so, a lot of that money's gonna hit the state government, and I don't know that it's ever gonna roll, roll downhill.
That doesn't mean that during, through the host community agreement negotiations, that certain things can't be negotiated for the town, but that's a whole nother ballgame that takes place with the BOS and the applicant, and not us, so.
And, and that's also in, a case by case, you know, I don't think that you could look at that and make it applicable across the board.
No, no, not at all.
And you may, you may get someone who comes in here and is like-
But, I have heard stories, let's just say, where towns made out very well.
Sure, well, and I'm sure that there's some, some establishments or businesses that will come in and say, "We'll give you whatever you want, just let us set up shop, let us do this, we have deep pockets."
Yeah, right.
And we had a proposal, what, two years ago, they were offering up a dollar a square foot on a 400,000 square foot facility per year.
And which I think is probably low in, in today's climate.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
And not that I want to sell the soul of the town, but, we get away all, all the, everything, so.
Thank you.
Please, go right ahead.
Katie Adams, Williams Drive, and I feel like I didn't say when I spoke before that I am for prohibition, voted no on for. And then, as I'm listening, I feel like we might want to consider not overcomplicating things, and looking for simplicity, so that it's easy for people to understand, breaking it into five- Breaking it into five may have some advantages for somebody to really specifically, but then at the same time communicating that and having people understand what their options are when they're voting, I feel like there could be a lot lost in translation. I would be for just the opportunity for people to say, "I want marijuana in Lunenburg." Because that's how I feel. I think if, in my opinion, a lot of people who would be against marijuana are just against it. I don't want it grown, I don't want it sold. I look at it as a drug. I mean, my background's in pharmacies, so I, you know, I know the positives and negatives of so many different drugs. But when you're dealing with marijuana and promoting it, what you end up with is cognitive impairment. And I don't want to live in a society where you have a slippery slope where we keep promoting cognitive impairment. We all know that alcohol does that, and everybody always tries to compare it. One thing we have with alcohol is a huge history and a lot of science behind it, and it's very well understood, especially when you deal with OUIs, and whether or not people have violated the right to drive. We have absolutely no way with marijuana to take people to court for an, I was just involved with an alcohol OUI, I was a witness, and he was found innocent of his accident, even with alcohol. It's even more convoluted with marijuana. And so I just think, okay, it passed in Massachusetts, but that doesn't mean that we all have to say we love cognitive impairment and we love drug use. And I think on the very basic level, by having a prohibition, you can just say, "I'm not really into drug use." So with alcohol specifically, I mentioned the OUI, and another thing that I just feel like, this marijuana thing's being so promoted by the industry that we're not really breaking it down. So if I'm drinking wine at a cookout, my kids aren't having any of it, unless you're, you know, breastfeeding, I guess. But if everyone's smoking marijuana in their car or at a party, their kids are getting secondhand exposure to a drug that causes cognitive impairment. I just think we're not talking about what's actually happening to us and it's being promoted by an industry. There's a lot of stuff you can see that it's coming at us from a point of view of making money, making money on drug use. I mean, that's the whole thing. I've had a lot of different experience in sales and marketing, and anybody who's growing it, selling it, their whole point's gonna be to, like anybody in a business, to maximize their profit, and they'll have more profit by more drug use. That's more cognitive impairment in a society. So I think when we're talking about like tax revenue, you also gotta talk about how there's increased crime, or we have, New Hampshire, it's not legal, what type of trafficking will there be where people are, you know, this is federally an illegal controlled substance. And so there's going to be some positioning of a drug from a legal state to an illegal state. So I just, I like the idea of a simple prohibition remaining so that people understand if they aren't into having marijuana in Lunenburg, they can just say no. I mean, how are you gonna make a street sign if there's five separate ones? Say, "No on 1A," and yet, I feel like it's gonna get really confusing. I just want to have like a "say no on question such and such" sign, and so that people can understand the option. Because I'm sitting back here thinking, how are we gonna even communicate when people, like Mr. Levesque said, aren't engaged? How are you going to educate and communicate if we overcomplicate? I would stick with a no. I think it's easier to say yes or no, and it's a lot less work for you guys if prohibition passes. And I think that's it. But the marijuana to me, it's a secondhand exposure, it's the fact that I have to smell it, and I don't want to. Alcohol's very different, in my opinion, and it shouldn't be thrown into this category of like, oh, well, we allow alcohol for cognitive impairment. I think we really gotta break it down. So, just say no.
I just comment, thank you. Those are excellent comments. I agree, especially with the nature of the marijuana as an inhalant, not, I don't know about the, you know, the stuff you eat, the candies and everything, but I know that it's just as bad for your lungs as cigarette smoke. There's no, I don't know what the regulations, if there are any, on what kind of addictive agents they are allowed or permitted to put into it. I know that there are various types of strengths of marijuana. I don't know whether that has anything to do with the addictive properties, whether we're just getting kids hooked, you know, on this stuff, and then they're gonna up the, you know, how much THC you're actually getting, and then the next thing, you know, you have a worst-case scenario. It's just not regulated enough yet, and they don't know what they're dealing with, clearly. But, that being said, they did say yes, so. It's a very complicated issue. But back to the five versus one, because that's an interesting point. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I agree with it, but it's, you know, one question's easier than five questions to answer. But then you are stuck with a bylaw that supposes many things. That it, all five factions of the industry are allowed, and that we're gonna put them someplace, and we're gonna be in the business of dictating where they go. So, that's the flip side of that, if we go with one question. I can't remember what Ken's opinion was on that.
I think he originally had discussed writing several different bylaws, but then he settled on the two.
Yeah, we went back and forth on it that one night.
But I don't think it was the ballot question, I think it was just the approach to writing the bylaw.
Okay. So I'd like to get his input.
Instead of going five different separate bylaw issues, we decided to go with the two-track. But I don't think he was talking to the point of the ballot question being...
Well, are we at a point where we're ready to say whether we're gonna do the five or the one, or...
I don't think we need to be right now.
Okay.
I think it's worth thinking on.
Okay.
Just, we have to... Sorry, just if we take the five approach from a bylaw standpoint, we can't just take a, a yes or no, and then take a, like a yes or no, prohibition or non-prohibition with the bylaw, and then do the five ballot questions?
No.
Is that what Tanner was saying?
No, no.
Can't do that, it's...
Whatever your bylaw is, has to match the ballot question word for word.
It's gotta be one or the other.
So it would be five prohibitions, if you did it that way, bylaws, and five ballot questions.
Five ballot questions, okay. You have to do it that way?
Correct.
Okay.
Who's handling packaging? Is that the state?
Packaging of...
Marijuana.
I would imagine the processors are packaging it.
Okay, well, who's handling the laws on packaging?
Oh, the state does. The Cannabis Control Commission, it's in there. It's actually in the PowerPoint that Kay Doyle did that I handed out. There's a whole section on packaging.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's a little symbol that's like a, like the scary triangle with a pot leaf in it and an exclamation point that has to be on all of them. They have prohibitions on spoofing existing candy products, of using cartoon...
Will they have warnings, says cigarettes do?
Uh, I'm not, I don't know if it's a warning or if it's just a little symbol. I think it has to say, "This product contains THC," or cannabis. I'm not sure exactly what the wording is, but they're very specific packaging requirements through the Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay.
So the labeling requirements exclude the use of symbols and verbiage to do with marijuana and consumption of it, but they're gonna have the warning label that has a pot leaf on it?
Well, I don't, I don't know about the packaging. The store, the establishment names have strict rules.
Okay.
I don't know about the establishment goods.
Okay.
So, but you couldn't have like, you couldn't have a red bag of chewy fruit pot candy that has a rainbow on it and looks like a Skittles package, but says something else on the front of it. I think they, they may even prohibit like bright colors. I don't remember how specific it got, but you can't mimic an existing product for your packaging.
I had thought you had spoken about labeling and branding and business names.
No, it was just, it was just business branding that you can't use. And it may extend to labeling as far as like marijuana iconography, other than, you know, the pot leaf, because it's...
They could source it from other states too, right?
No.
No, it has everything...
Everything needs to be, yes. It needs to be, once you source it from another state, it's interstate commerce and that's a federal law.
And it's 21 and over, right? So can you work in an establishment if you're under? No. Okay, good. Can't handle it at all?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And everybody who works in these establishments is required to go through the background check through the Cannabis Control Commission. So they'll be, they'll be running background checks on every employee, so that you can't just like hire someone, have them be like, "Yeah, I'm 21." Like, you hand over licenses and you fill out paperwork, and as far as I'm to understand, it's similar to, you know, the FBI background checks that they run for foster parents and that kind of stuff. You go and get your fingerprinted and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I've heard it's gonna be pretty strict.
Mr. Chair, if there isn't any more public comment?
Please.
Hi. Darren Massey, resident of Lunenburg. I don't know if I'll make much friends with this comment. We're all friends. I just think, I'd just like to, in my mind, for myself, up-level the conversation in the sense of looking at it black and white, prohibition or no prohibition, even five versus one question. For myself, it doesn't take a mature look at actually what is the status quo. The status quo is, we have marijuana on the streets. The status quo is, there's gonna be pot shops opening up three miles away from our border. My mind, it would be much more mature to regulate sensibly on all five. That would give us the power and control to set the terms. It would give us information of what material is in our town. It would give us information from those businesses with some kind of reasonable, fair agreement on the financial side, on the information sharing side of how to deal with substance use in our community. The reality is, we have substance use at a high level across the board, multiple substances. Some of the substances are presently legal, some of the substances are presently illegal. Sane, sensible regulation would allow us to deal with these issues transparently, at least more transparently than if we just went yea or nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something to add, Tanner?
Well, I just, I feel like we're getting off track a little bit with some of the discussion, and my thought is that we should focus more on just retail and the bylaws specifically, because we've pretty much come to an agreement that we're gonna propose prohibition. That ultimately will be in the hands of the voters. So I feel like we should start digging into the bylaw part of things, because at the end of the day, we gotta get it done.
Mm-hmm. No, I hear ya.
When it comes to the overlay portion of things, are we looking at it from a standpoint of creating an overlay for all the uses? Or would we drill down and get specific and say, retail goes here, cultivation goes here, testing la, I mean...
What do you want to do? You really could do any, any or all.
Yeah. Well, and I feel like for some of these uses, and again, I'm not endorsing passing, approving any of this, I'm just looking at the reality that we, as a board, have no control over the prohibition that's ultimately at the voters. All we can do is develop the regulation based on the feedback. And my thought on the overlay is that if you take a look at the zoning or area requirements, like how much land you need for a retail shop versus cultivation, there's a stark contrast there. And so I feel like if we're gonna go the overlay route, which in my mind makes the most sense, because it gives us the ability to be very concise about where these facilities go.
It would be the most restrictive.
And that, that thought process of the buffer and around schools, like if you don't want retail around a school, and you're worried about the 500-foot or 1,000-foot, or how you define all of this, just make the overlay in a spot where there's no kids, period. And you just keep it out. And it's black and white, it's on a map, and there's no gray area.
Right, that's what I was kinda asking, if we had a way to map those out, because that, then we know, we can't put anything there, if it's, that at least gives us...
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure how this is gonna be taken, but actually, Adam Costa mentioned that you could, according to what he's seen, you could technically zone it out of your community entirely with offsets.
No.
Ah...
You, you, no, he said, he said you have to be careful about the way you set up an overlay, because if you zone it out of your community through offset, the Attorney General can, if it's challenged, you'll lose the court challenge, and your bylaw becomes invalid, and then you're in a whole hot mess. You can certainly limit, and this is done in a lot of...
What I heard him say was, you could limit retail, just retail, again, eliminate retail from your community by saying it cannot be within 2,000 feet of, of, you know, anywhere where children congregate, and without doing that to the other four. You follow what I'm saying?
I think that's what he said. I think you misunderstood what he said.
Okay.
Because I'm, the way I recall the conversation, and I've heard him say this other times, is you can do that, sure, but it's not gonna stand up to a court challenge.
Yeah, it could be challenged.
And it's, it's not good policy to do that. There are communities who have done similar to that. They've, you know, set up certain buffers and allowed it in certain zones, and they end up with like five or six parcels where you could theoretically put it. So ultimately, it's very difficult, but not impossible. But that's not zoning it out, that's limiting where it goes based on resident feedback and...
Right, so that's fine. Maybe I misunderstood him, but I, yeah, I'll check with him next time I talk to him.
But yeah, you can't, you can't set your zone up so that it completely prohibits anyone from locating.
No, not, I'm not saying that you could prohibit all of them, I'm saying you could...
No, even, even a single one. Like, you couldn't say retail and say, "We're gonna set up this buffer from this, that, and the other thing," and when you drew it out, there wasn't a parcel in town that qualified. That would...
Basically prohibition without a ballot question.
Correct, yeah, correct. The opposite of a floating zone. Well, I mean, so if you're gonna pick an overlay, where do you go?
Well, I think that's kind of the, the point of these discussions with the public...
Where would you go?
Well, that's why I want to hear from the people that are looking for prohibit. What's their worst-case, well, not their worst-case scenario, but where would they feel it would be?
I don't think you're gonna get...
Well, I know, and that's the toughest part, because I want to have productive input, but if they're dead-set against it, then I'm not gonna try and change their mind either, you know?
Yeah, well, I think it makes reasonable sense then to look at, where are your off-site alcohol distribution facilities, right? Where are your smoke shops? Where are your adult uses?
In my mind, it's, it's a retail use, right?
Yeah.
So it should follow where we put retail uses currently, with the understanding that it comes with a special set of circumstances, like I don't think it's appropriate in the village district.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's just, libraries, schools...
But if you're gonna have one, then you're gonna have many, so...
But it sounds like you're talking about the commercial zone.
Yeah.
Which is where we would essentially push retail that's not the village. And if you limit it to commercial zone, you know, you, we have a couple of odd blips of commercial, I guess I'll call them. You know, we have the three zones on 2A. We have Shady Point, which in and of itself is a commercial zone. And there's another parcel a little north of that on Reservoir Road that is a commercial But with things like that, you can say it's permissible in a commercial zone, provided that it is X number of feet from a residential zone or use, as measured from the property line. And that would, what that would do is, it would prevent something like Shady Point, or honestly, even the two, three, most likely, Route 2A zones from becoming a place where those go. And I say the blips, I'm talking about the ones to the, to the east of Main Street.
Harbor.
Yeah, Townsend Harbor and the two, the two manufactured home communities. But, you know, then you do have a strip of, of commercial on the north side of Mass Ave from the police station down to Electric Ave. And, you know, again, those parcels aren't incredibly deep, they're bounded by a residential zone on the rear, so...
You also have some on Chase.
Correct, you have some on Chase, you have the, the rest of, the rest of 2A down, you have Southern Electric, and you have a little bit tucked back behind Pleasant Street and Summer.
You wouldn't have Southern Electric because you've got, well, I don't know what the distance is, but you gotta park down there where children congregate.
What I'm saying is you have a, a significant commercial zone down there. Again, and depending on, on how you measure the distance from the, of the facility from a residential zone, if you're using property line, pretty much all your commercial zones are gone. You're not gonna be able to do it. If you're measuring it from the building or the use, you might find some areas along 2A, you might find some areas along Summer Street, and maybe, probably not along Electric. And maybe, maybe up on Chase Road.
What about stipulations that require for the retail establishment to be a standalone business? Because my thought process is if you take some of these commercial areas like Walmart, for example, I don't think that's an appropriate use. I don't wanna go into Hannaford to do my grocery shopping and have a retail facility right there.
Next to the dentist?
Maybe.
Yeah.
And it's all by zone, so you couldn't put in the bylaw that it has to be its own freestanding entity?
Why not?
Okay, I just, I'm asking...
It's gotta be a freestanding building.
Yeah, you could, you could say, you know, shall not be attached to, at, at least I believe that you can, I don't see why you couldn't.
A lot of them also have, you can't have two next door to each other, they have to be separated by...
Yeah, there's usually a separation requirement.
Yeah.
And...
And for retail, we're talking a couple, we're not finding a place for 10 of them, you know?
No, and, and if, you know, we're talking freestanding, you know, we went to, to Seattle for vacation and they're probably two years ahead of where Massachusetts is and Washington. And obviously, much more urban than Lunenburg is. I don't think I saw any that weren't connected to something else, but also, we're talking about a denser mixed-use area that we saw them in, and, you know, they were first-floor commercial, upper-story office or residential.
Some of the regulations I've seen have just said they have to be separated by a solid, solid wall from any other business going on, so it can't be, you know, even if it's within some other building, it has to be separated.
But, yeah, but I think, you know, what Tanner's point is, is that a few strip malls that we have around town...
You wanna get them out of there.
We, yeah, because they tend to offer businesses that are more family-oriented. It's not as if we have a place or places that you're generally not going with children. You know, I think maybe the Summer Street Strip down on the Pittsburgh Line is the only one, but there's driving school there, so, you know, does that qualify as an educational establishment?
And I, I guess, to a certain extent, we can regulate it through crafting the overlay, like don't include Walmart and shrink, tweak it here and there.
If you wanna do it as an overlay, yes. I think requiring them to be a standalone building or business, I, I think is probably one way to, you know, to narrow down their opportunities to interact with general retail. Now... And then I guess I think to someplace like on the Pittsburgh Line on 2A, where the smoke shop and the...
Hydroponics.
Is that what it is? You know, they're all one building.
Yeah.
Is that standalone if all of those businesses are co-owned?
Well, they're connected now, I think, I think they opened that right up, so it's one, the only other thing is the storage for fun stuff.
As I say, I've, I've, I've never been, I'm usually going fast when I go by there.
They're not separate stores, they're one, I think they blew the wall out on the inside and made one, one store.
But at one point, they were two different stores.
Right, well, one was the...
And they were owned by the same person. And, and not that, I guess I'm just trying to...
And they're packed, I don't know why, but you drive by there and they're packed all the time.
But at the end of the day, it sounds like the overlay is probably the best way to go.
And then what do we have, I mean, how many properties, 'cause I know we run into spot zoning, how many properties do we have to include? Is there guidelines for that?
We can't benefit a singular property owner.
Okay.
And is it going to be a singular marijuana business overlay? Or is it going to be a series of overlays? A marijuana cultivation overlay, a marijuana retail overlay? And what are the implications of that?
I think it would have to be.
Or is it just a retail overlay and everything else gets zoned into an existing zone?
I think we cross that bridge as we go through the other discussions, but I, I'm just looking at the size of the parcel that you'd need to be a cultivator versus a retail establishment.
Yeah, I mean, retail, you need about, you need about an acre.
Right, and I think the perceived negative impacts apply more to retail than they would an indoor growing facility or something like that, 'cause there's, there's direct access to it through retail, not through a cultivation facility.
And the cultivation is gonna be really interesting because we don't have a lot of big commercial or industrial pieces of land.
Plenty of large industrial pieces, they're just otherwise occupied.
And, and it's kind of, you know, a lot of the other land is tied up in residential areas and, in my mind, it's not a residential use. If you look at what other communities have done, they've pretty much wiped it out of residential uses.
Would it be allowed an outlying if we said no to residential?
Outlying is a residential zone.
I mean, you're gonna have to go back into the map and check everything, right? Because you're gonna, with the setbacks and everything, especially if you say it's, you know, prohibited within X from a commer-- I mean, from a residential.
Yeah, I mean, that, that will, that will really be, that will really be a kicker.
Yeah, you're gonna run out of land.
And is it a residential zone or, 'cause I mean, Summer Street, there's residences, so it's...
Again, it depends how you say it.
It's mixed-use, so, you know, it's Summer Street...
No, no, he, he means on Summer Street in general is...
Is mixed, it's mixed-use, so if you, right, so you'd have to take that as a separate case because it is mixed-use, right?
But if we said it was allowed in...
Non-conforming uses in a commercial district.
Correct, it's, it, you would have to, if you wanted it from a residential use, you'd have to say that. Or you would have to say from a residential district. Excuse me.
And the challenge on 2A is the commercial district is not very deep.
No.
No.
And even where it's deep, the whole parcel is the depth. Like Walmart is half, not half, it's, it's one-eighth in the residential zone at the rear, so...
My point is, if it is residentially, if it's a mixed-use district like Summer Street is, do we really wanna open that up to retail in any way? Because you can't, you can't get a, you know, an offset of 200 feet away from any residence.
Well, but the issue with Summer Street is, is the mixed-use is an overlay and there's an underlying existing zoning.
Right.
So, if you said it were allowed in, let's say you decided you wanted to take the, the turn-of-the-century adult use tact that most communities have said, we're gonna make them put it in the industrial area. Because no one's gonna wanna be seedy and go to the industrial area. There's industrial area on Summer Street, within the Summer Street overlay district that someone could come in and say, not using the overlay district, using the industrial district, I'm gonna place it here. So, you're not opening it up for that, it's already open by product of there being an existing underlying zone.
But what I'm saying is, so with our overlay...
Well, okay, yeah, with the overlay, you're in a different...
Right, so we don't want to put the overlay in an area like that, do we? Where we have residences?
I don't know, do you?
I don't think we should. It hardly seems fair that everyone else in town gets a 200-foot setback except for, oh, you happen to be lucky enough to live on Summer Street, sorry, you get it next door. That's my, my reservation.
Yeah. That will certainly be the challenge because if you go down 2A, there's residences mixed in the commercial district everywhere. So...
But again, if the prohibition of even retail or altogether doesn't pass...
Yeah, I mean, this is...
We have to fix somewhere and allow it somewhere.
This is the backup plan to prohibition not passing is to develop a sound regulation, right? So...
All right, well, I guess we can't, we're not gonna decide this tonight, but I just wanted to give, make sure the residents had ample time to speak their piece.
No, but I would love to hear if there's other things that the board would like added into bylaw. I mean, clearly, we're, we're leaning towards an overlay district that, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing that, that a standalone business is, is the way the board's leaning, not integrated into another shopping center or, or mixed-use, spacing between establishments of a certain depth, distance, and that there'd be setbacks required from residential districts.
Or uses.
Well, which, I mean, it's, it's tough.
No, for me, it, for my mind, in my mind, it's not about that. I don't care if it's in the middle of, if it's next to a smoke shop and a liquor store, that seems like the perfect place. If it's a, you know, a connected building...
If there's a house next to the liquor store, you can't put it there.
If it's a connected building, I don't care. Should it be at Walmart? No, probably not. But it doesn't really matter to me whether it's a standalone or it's connected, I mean, who cares? As long as it's not in a residential or impacting residential area.
Well, I, I think...
I think that's the more important question.
And, and if, you know, what I heard from Tanner was, let's avoid the potential conflict of this being located with establishments where you might bring your children.
Right.
Some people will bring their children to the liquor store, and I'm not saying that, you know, can't say, I've never brought my kid in the liquor store. But i- if you parse out what uses it can be connected to, it gets more complicated than making it standalone. And you, you may have an easier ability to limit where it can go and you may be able to avoid that conflict with residential in a, in a cleaner way.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm not necessarily advocating for or against, I'm saying that's what, you know, that's one aspect of that, I think. If, if the board doesn't wanna put it in there, that's, that's up to you.
I'd like to go back and take a look at if anyone has overlays, you know, what their criteria was for deciding what their overlay was before we decide on it. I mean, it's, you know, we may find something, some, some wisdom out there that makes sense. It just doesn't make sense to me to just...
Well, Deerfield does have an overlay and you should have their bylaw.
Yeah.
Do we have means to use like GIS and craft an overlay and have it tell us if there's residential uses within so many feet and all of that? Or are we gonna have to...
I don't know about residential uses, I think that would become down to a, you know, individual proposition. No one's, we certainly could.
Yeah, what I'm trying to avoid is us crafting an overlay that essentially is prohibition.
Right, we have an overlay where it's not allowed in there.
And then you have somebody challenge it and you lose and you have nothing. So, but that's, it seems like it's gonna be very labor-intensive to try to sort that out.
Well, we don't have a GIS license in town, so we could, and, and we do get some assistance from the Regional Planning Agency. So, we'd contact Monmouth Chase it and we could work with them to, you know, identify all the schools, you know, all the education establishments as recorded in, you know, with the state. And then put the 500 feet around that and then go and cross out all of the residential areas and say, okay, here's our overlay.
Well, what kind of, what kind of a setback, or would anyone, I haven't heard anybody say, I want, you know, 100 feet from a residential zone or what?
No, I haven't.
So, does anybody have any feelings about that? 50 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet? How, you know?
I don't have a...
That might help get us to...
On the setback in that regard, but I would say that the Village District in my mind is out in anything east of the center of town, those couple spots of commercial along Townsend Harbor and then the mobile home communities. That, none of those make any sense to me, so that leaves us with Chase Road, Electric Ave and 2A plus the little bit at the bottom of Lancaster Ave, Westminster Shirley Road.
I would, I would like to suggest that we have the, the setback distance, whatever number we choose, to be from an entrance to the facility rather than the parcel boundary or the edge of the building, because the entrances...
You mean like the entry door?
Well, also the emergency entry, I mean, any, any place there an employee would be coming or, or, or a customer would be coming.
From the building, essentially.
Well, right, 'cause if you did it from the property line, you could have a little strip mall with a huge piece of property over here where there's nothing and it still wouldn't be allowed 'cause it's a residential use.
I'm, I'm looking here at the zoning, we've got minimum one-acre zoning everywhere except for the Village Center District. And then that includes, I mean, there's a lot of existing non-conforming parcels that are much smaller. Change of use is not gonna negate the possibility for the reuse of a, under, under a specified parcel size, right? 'Cause you can't, if it's in the zone, you can't tell them that they can't do it because their parcel's not, well, like, if, if the bylaw says that, yeah, you can, but...
Well, if it's a grandfathered lot, then you can't tell them they can't.
So, retail, retail would be okay, but like, like a gym, if it was gonna change to a retail, would be a change of use?
It depends on, are we talking like a pre-existing non-conforming gym moving to a conforming use?
The pre-existing non-conforming lot, 'cause we're talking about lot size.
Well, any expansion alteration, I'd have to look at the way that, that it reads in the bylaw, but if they're not changing the structure or the lot, the use is irrelevant.
Okay. So, that would be my recommendation, I mean, 'cause that's gonna be the most noxious section of the... Part of these retail facilities is gonna be the traffic coming and going, not only the people that are, that are patronizing it, but also people working there. I'm pretty sure that they're fairly regulated as far as who comes and goes where and when already.
I'm, I'm, that's fine with me, I just, I would like to get some kind of, I want some kind of fair measurement, some, something that can be equally applied. I don't think, well, I don't want it in this strip mall is equally applied, it's not fairly applied. So, I would like a standard, something where you can say, we wanna be 100 feet away from a residential zone, you know, or residential use or whatever it is, but I don't think it's fair to just go around going, nah, not that one, that one, not that one, 'cause my kids go there. No, I just don't, I disagree with that.
I think to Matt's point about measuring from the building would probably make the most sense, especially given the fact that the district is small to begin with and you have properties that have two zonings and on the same lot and, you know, it's commercial for the first 150, 200 feet, whatever, and then the back of it's residential that just puts you in a really tough spot.
Puts you in a bind, yeah.
Or including the parking facilities as well, because like you said about the liquor store, you, you can't restrict them from going and buying their, their alcohol and drinking it in the parking lot.
That's right.
So, that would minimize that as well.
So, if we went with an overlay and then we can limit the number of licenses to two, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the medical that we have, and retail's allowed and commercial. Cultivation and agriculture is allowed in all districts by right.
That's an old one.
Well, that's an old one.
Because we, we changed that at the last town meeting.
So you got 500 feet of schools and playgrounds.
Yep, which is automatic.
Yep, which is automatic.
Now, we can reduce or enlarge that? Is that according to the, according to town council?
Costa.
Okay, so we're not.
Well, and I think the overlay will do that for us.
Yeah.
Because it'll just won't.
Yeah, yeah, you'll just, it's, it's here.
Yeah.
And that way we don't get into that whole can of worms where how do you measure it and all of this? We just
Yep.
Be very concise and we know it conforms, and if anybody wants to open a daycare, they know that's probably not a great area.
Well, and daycare isn't included in the ex, in the excluded classes for adult use.
So they wouldn't be protected, so.
And it's pre-existing.
Whoa, 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 what?
Daycare's, it's k- kindergarten to 12th grade.
Oh, yeah, you can add daycares though.
You can.
You can add anything you want. Okay. So, um, which is probably good idea. I mean, it's congregate there.
Well, right. And is that something, I mean, they would all have to be licensed through the state, so there would be a way to possibly find out where they are.
Yeah.
Or all licensed daycares.
Yeah, you could do that.
See if you have one person watching their friend's kids, they consider that a daycare.
All bets are off, baby. No. Your kid's huffing. So. You gonna put a, put the map to that then and do the 500 foot?
See what I can do.
Okay. And then, does anybody have any setback requirements on away from, uh, residents?
I think the 500 feet's.
Wait, you're not, you're, you're gonna zone everything out at 500 feet? You mean, just, just do the schools?
Yeah, yeah, from the schools, but from residential uses, I mean, 100, 100 feet.
100 feet?
If it's to the, but I mean, if you're going from the entrance, that's a different story, because if you're going on the property line, 100 feet's 100 feet.
No, no, from, from the entrance.
Oh, then probably 200 feet, I'd say, from the entrance.
Can we see what that map would look like?
See what I can do.
Now, I had said an opening, an entrance or an exit to the building. Tanner had said the building, and I think I heard Greg repeat the building. I wouldn't be object to either one.
Yeah, right, the footprint?
But.
Of the building?
I think the footprint of the building is easiest thing to.
Cleanest way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Can we, can we incorporate the parking as well? Because, I mean, it is one of these things that moves in the air. It's not like it's in a bottle and it doesn't go anywhere. The bottle isn't tipped. I mean, that was, that was a good point.
That's up to you guys. Uh, you know, 200 feet.
I mean, would that be super messy by saying an offset from the parking?
200 feet's gonna push it to like.
From the developed area.
How would you, how would you define that? I mean, would that be edge of pavement?
Well, it would be like the developed area of the lot.
A buffer.
Or something, you know?
I, I would have to think about how to, to phrase that, but, I mean, I'm sure. You can do anything. I don't know if the Attorney General will pass it, but.
Sure.
You know, they, they'd probably caution you and.
Well, I don't want to make it too difficult for future boards to.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I think that's a good starting point. Let's see what the map looks like.
Yeah, I mean, it'll probably be a little while to get that map.
Like, how long?
I don't know, I have to.
October 22nd or whatever it is?
We'll have to wait and see.
Okay.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but I only see that we've got one small piece just off of the intersection of, um, Mass Ave and, and Townsend Harbor Road that is actually retail commercial.
Retail commercial no longer exists.
Okay, so it's either commercial or limited business or Office Park.
Correct.
Right, okay.
In Chase Road, it's
Commercial.
All the way up?
No.
No.
It starts at the intersection of West Townsend Road and Chase. It runs up the west side of Chase Road and bleeds over a little bit onto the, the east side.
It's a big chunk, actually.
Into, actually into Mr. Massey's land. And, um, just north of the DPW. Maybe even including a little, nope, just north of the DPW.
So what's the dealership? The dealership is outline?
No, dealership is, uh, commercial.
Right, the dealership.
Goes from, yeah.
Oh, it is?
I believe so.
From like the truck place to the to the end of Holman Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's those three small.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, right, right to the end of Holman, yep. Okay. I buy it all the time, but it never walks in. Okay, I got 20% packaging.
I would assume that all of these uses are gonna be special permit. Nothing, we're not gonna allow anything by right.
No.
No, all special permits, sounds like.
Everything. Right.
Okay.
Across the board, yeah, no.
That was the trend in the other bylaws that, that picked up on.
I think that's, I think that's what you see. I don't think any, I think most people, there was certainly, uh, a lot of talk before the regulations came out about, well, the way that the referendum was written specifically includes language that seemed to exclude special permit. Uh, but as the Cannabis Control Commission sort of took shape and started working with the Attorney General, it seemed that special permit was the way that they were actually encouraging people to permit these.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I mean, you tell me, but I would, I would expect that you, you five would be looking for, for special permit.
Oh, CCC, they're gonna do all the signage stuff, right?
Yes. I mean, we can further regulate signage, but I think that as Attorney Costa said, um, we really don't want to get into that. Uh, we really can't regulate content. Uh, it's a First Amendment thing, and the way that the regulations read, we can't, uh, we can't limit signage to less than that of what a retail alcohol license, um, establishment would be allowed to do, and I mean, anybody who's been to the PACY lately would say you probably don't even want to wade into those waters and just, you know, go with what the zone allows as far as sign size and location and let the Cannabis Control Commission control the content, which they've, they've done as part of their regulations.
Can you check, once you get all of the, uh, zones that we're talking about, distanced out? Can you check, uh, cross-reference some against, you know, athletic fields, that kind of stuff, any place where kids are, you know?
Well, I think it'll be small enough that we can just sit here as a board and. I was gonna say, I, I think, yeah. Drive around town and sort it out, but.
Well, I'd love it if you, you know, okay.
I think once you throw schools and stuff in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, just as a point of reference, like my garage on 2A, that lot where the garage sits.
You mean the one in the commercial zone?
Yeah.
In the commercial zone with the solar on the roof?
Yes. Yeah. I didn't cut a single tree down to put that up.
I know. Looks awesome, actually.
I love trees. The commercial district on that parcel goes back 200 feet. And it's, it's basically the back lot line of the building. So if we said 100 feet Yeah. in that portion of the district, and there's a few areas in the commercial district along Electric Ave that it looks like it's about the same depth. Essentially, if you put the use right in the middle, you barely have 100 feet to the edge of the district. So if we say it's 100 feet to the edge of a residential use, like my house next door is a residential use, the building's 40 feet off the lot line, it kind of puts a clamp on how much.
We could also specify a residential dwelling.
All I'm saying is, I would like to get a picture of what we're talking about, if we have a, a range of criteria that we put on this thing. Let's put 50 feet, let's put 100 feet, let's see what kind of zone we're talking about, because we clearly have no clue until we get a map that says, you know, it's some ideas, generate some ideas about this. Is that just too much to ask, maybe?
Well, I, no, it's not too much to ask, but the more times you go back to this, well, uh, I mean, we get eight hours of work from MRPC for each year for GIS. That goes away real quick. And, and each time we go back, then we're writing a contract with them to pay them to do this work, and it's where does that money come from? And.
Okay.
And, you know, so I, I'm not opposed to developing the map. I think that we need to be cautious about saying, well, let's try this, and then let's try that, and let's try this in order, you know, in order to see, let's see what the map looks like, then let's ask them to put 50 feet on, then let's ask them to put 200 feet.
I'm saying, just generate some.
Yeah.
Fine, I'll do it myself.
No, no.
Never mind, I can do it in 15 minutes. It's okay. Forget it.
Yeah. The real challenge is, it like, in thinking about 2A, if you take some of these areas, like down by Mackey and the gas station there, you have Dr. Walker's office, then you have a house.
Yep.
Then you, you know, and if you go, if you go the other way, you've got the gas station with the car wash, and then you've got White's Woods. Then you have a house, then you get Cabalicious, and then, and then Tilt Nav. I mean, there's just.
Right, that's right.
So can we, can we say that there are definitely places that we don't want them, like Village Center and, uh, would we? I, I, I think we can safely say we wouldn't want retail at all in the Village Center.
Village and anything east on 2A.
And then what about recreation? I mean, let's get on the list of the, the zones that we have. We've got Res A, B, and Outlying for residents. We're gonna have offsets from those. The limited business resident, limited business residential, which is also kind of residential, right? Because it says, so then we've got Office Park, Commercial, Recreation, Village, so.
Commercial.
I mean, I think you're essentially looking at, at Office Park Industrial and Commercial.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and depending on how you zone it, house prices in the commercial district might go through the roof real quick.
Yeah. Yeah, you may have somebody that wants to buy a house and convert it over.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right, because for, well, for a retail marijuana place, you probably don't need a ton of square footage.
And from a zoning standpoint, whether you agree or disagree with having a retail store from a community planning and zoning perspective, you're taking a non-conforming use.
And making it a conforming use.
Conforming.
Mm-hmm.
So. I would say for retail, it only would make sense to use a commercial, because if you're the industrial use, I think is more suitable for.
Research.
Research, testing, that type of stuff.
You know, and I, I think, I'm thinking a lot of times with putting something like marijuana retail or adult bookstores or adult entertainment establishments in industrial is, there's no one to offend or bother. Because those districts tend to be separated, they tend to be things that operate during the day and are closed at night. And if you have something there that happens to operate at night, there's no one around, you're not interfering with life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, and so while I agree with you, a retail establishment wouldn't be the, I wouldn't say, let's put it in a, in industrial zone. If, if one were to look at it and say, where can I put this and be as unobtrusive as possible, that tends to be the place that.
Yeah.
Communities have looked historically for placing things that they find distasteful, but either can't or won't prohibit.
Well, can you say? So the overlay is the same for the two?
Can what?
Can we say that the overlay, can you, can you have two uses in the same overlay? Can we say that the overlay for, let's say for retail and for research and R and D or whatever we call it?
Testing.
Testing is the same. It's the industrial area. Because I would have no problem with that.
Well, if, if you're gonna do that, then why not just say it's the industrial area?
Yeah.
But you don't even need an overlay, just.
Yeah.
They're, they're allowed in the over, in the industrial area by, by special permit.
By right?
That's what you want.
So it looks like there's 20 or so parcels in the Office Park Industrial.
Probably about right.
Is that enough to qualify?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not, yeah. Then I think that that might be the no-brainer that I've heard discussed.
And there's three owners in those 20 parcels.
Just push it out there and make them all rich.
MBT runs, MBTA runs through there too.
Yeah?
The weed train.
I'm telling you, man, I want to see it. A little bean over there, a Bella's, get your weed, go for a hike.
So that would simplify things quite a bit if we use.
Certainly would.
Oh, but then there's also the part along Summer Street.
I was gonna say, there's our industrial area along Summer Street, but there's, there's probably about five more parcels over in that.
And that's all mostly MBTA, isn't it?
A, a big portion of it is MBTA. Uh, I think three of them are the Millers. Um, actually, I think four of them are the Millers now.
One of those is a residence.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. A new residence.
I don't know, I mean, would a pot store be more disruptive than living next to a paving company, even if you own the paving company?
Yeah.
Um, again, I think it's a matter of degree.
We could address that through a setback from a residential dwelling.
You could.
Right, because they're insulated on both sides by their business.
Yeah, and that won't trip anything up in the industrial area because there's.
No resi, well, there's a couple.
I can only think of one.
Yeah, the yellow one?
There's maybe one or two
Yeah, there's like.
On Leamester Shirley Road.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's not, it's not a dearth of them and, you know, I think that.
Simplify things from a GIS standpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All that, we.
If you, if you, if you stick to the industrial, yeah, you would.
So industrial zone, two licenses, and 100-foot setback from a residential dwelling?
Yeah. Yeah. Does that make sense?
And that 100 feet.
Greg?
Is measured from the developed area of the lot? Or from structure to structure?
I'd say structure to structure.
Yeah.
Because, uh.
100 feet?
A business with three buildings, you're insulated on those two sides or whatever, and.
Yeah.
Even if you wanted to make the buffer a little bit bigger to.
And we could require parking in the rear, right? So that it is not visible from the street.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that that helps you if, honestly, I would think you would want the parking visible.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if you're, if you're concerned about people consuming the products
Yeah.
in their vehicles or in the parking lot, tucking it behind the building makes that.
I'm not sure that's what we heard, but, um, it's not.
What you heard from who?
From the public. I mean, we've had a few peoples talking about the, the visibility in, in the face, in the vic, in the vicinity.
I think if it's in the industrial zone, I'm not sure how, how big an impact that would have, but.
Well, and, and you may be correct. I, I guess what I heard was, we don't want consumption on premises. And as far as the impact and in your face, and perhaps I inferred incorrectly, but I inferred that that was more about the business itself. And, you know, that you have an open, you know, to, you know, drug market was, you know, maybe not exactly how it was said, but, you, you know, you have someone selling drugs at a established business. Um, and whether the parking lot's in the front or the back, I don't know that that necessarily changes that perception.
Okay.
All right, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of, of parking in the back. I think having the building addressed to the street generally is a, is a better way to do it.
Yeah.
Um, but.
You saying people were worried about like shady activity?
I don't know, but I mean, doesn't make much difference what your bylaw says. If people want to smoke a joint in the parking lot right after they buy it, they're gonna do that.
Yeah.
So.
They do it in Hanaford all the time.
Yeah, exactly. So. I mean, if you can.
Lunch at 2:00.
They buy pot at Hanaford, smoke it in the yard.
I don't know if they buy it there, but they certainly smoke it there.
Okay. Okay. So, we're at the point where we're looking at industrial zone as an overlay district.
Sounds like.
Not as an overlay district, just.
I mean, is it just, just, excuse me.
Zoned into the industrial district.
Zoned into the industrial district with 100-foot setback from a residential.
Dwelling.
Dwelling.
Measured structure to structure.
Structure to structure and, and all this other stuff, right?
So, what that's gonna look like, my understanding is the.
The, all of the previous notes.
At the last meeting?
Yeah.
Stuff I ran through earlier.
Cameras, security, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, a lot of that stuff is, is mandated by the Cannabis Control Commission and we certainly can reiterate.
Okay, yeah.
Some of those things, um, and, and we can also require that they have a security plan as approved by the local police chief.
Yeah, good.
You know, I think similar to the way that it's done in, in the, the medical bylaw.
Now, without getting ahead of ourselves, because we have a special meeting for the testing uses, but it seems to me like we can use all of this as a template for that.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and I, I think really at this point, what you're now looking into is, uh, you know, I heard from the board and from the residents that they, they want to see spacing between establishments, so you're not.
Mm-hmm.
We only, we're talking about a, a limit of two, so, you know, clearly we're not Worcester where we could have 15 pot establishments in a five-block area. Um, and I don't know that they're gonna have that either, but, um.
Where, where?
You probably don't want them right next to each other either, uh, so, you know, I'm assuming 2,000 feet minimum.
You know what, I don't, I'm not opposed to them being right next door, I don't really care, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't answer that question.
If we're only having two, it's not like, and it's.
I say keep them in this, you know, keep them in.
I think from a business standpoint, they wouldn't wanna.
Right.
Be next, right next to each other either, I mean.
Well, my concern would be that district down there is relatively small.
Mm-hmm.
And so, depending on.
Well, if we have two districts though and two.
They're pretty well separated.
It's pretty big. That's right, because we have the piece on Summer Street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, theoretically, one could go.
Yeah, it, it would sort of force them to separate in that, that way.
Okay.
And honestly, that section of Lemmester Shirley Road is pretty long.
It is, that's.
A half mile wouldn't put a huge dent in it, other than finding the ability to purchase or rent space.
So, separate them by 2,000 feet?
I, I, I just kinda threw that out there.
I'm gonna stay silent on that one, I don't care.
Yeah, no, I think that the market, market conditions are gonna stipulate that they're not next to each other anyway.
And we're only gonna have two, so.
Yeah, works for me.
So, to go back to your question, I think, is that we'll have, we'll have retail marijuana establishments and across the board, it'll be no and then it'll be SP in Office Park Industrial.
Yep, yep.
Sounds right.
All right, so we see, um, you put something together for the next time?
See what I can do.
Okay, we'll see what use you make of the next three weeks, mister. Chair?
No other public comment on this issue, move on. All right, we'll go into minutes approval.